And we request that men, if you have a hat or whatever, for the purpose of singing of the anthem, we request that you would take it off. So if we could all rise so that we can officially start our proceedings.
(speaking in Afrikaans)
We may be seated. Maybe let me start by introducing all of us ourselves. In front of you is the Portfolio Committee on Transport.
My name is Lisa Manu. I am the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee.
My name is Lisa Manu. I will introduce my colleagues. And we won't interpret their names. I will call their names, they'll stand and acknowledge, so that we can go quicker. I will start on my extreme left. Honorable Sitole, member of the Portfolio Committee. Next to him is Honorable Hun Senga, member of the Portfolio Committee. Next to him is Honorable Nolu Chungu, member of the Portfolio Committee. On my extreme right is Honorable Kumalo Umdugwalo. On my immediate right next to me, Honorable McDonald. I will start on my extreme left. Honorable Sitole, member of the Portfolio Committee. I will introduce my colleagues. And we won't interpret their names. I will call their names, they'll stand and acknowledge, so that we can go quicker. I will start on my extreme left. Honorable Sitole, member of the Portfolio Committee. Next to him is Honorable Hun Senga, member of the Portfolio Committee. Next to him is Honorable Nolu Chungu, member of the Portfolio Committee. On my extreme right is Honorable Kumalo Umdugwalo. On my immediate right next to me, Honorable McDonald. Alright, so the meeting here is a meeting of the Portfolio Committee. Who has come here to consult and to hear from the community in this area about their views as it relates to the Rail Safety Bill. So for purposes of this sitting, this is a parliamentary sitting. So what we will do going forward is that I will sit down so that I can summarize what the bill says, just to remind and refresh our memories. Thereafter, we are going to invite yourselves to talk to us and tell us what are your views as it relates to this bill. How we are going to do it is that we are going to take hands. Everybody will and shall have an opportunity to speak. What we humbly request is that if something has been said, if you don't mind, don't repeat it. Say something that has not been said. So the chairs here in the centers, what we are going to use, will identify hands and people will come to the center, introduce yourself, the organization you represent, if you represent any organization. We want to know whether you support the bill or you do not support it. We will ask that we limit our input to three minutes per person. The reason is to try and accommodate as many people as possible. So that is how we are going to conduct this and we are not here to answer any questions. But we are here to listen to your input as it relates to the Rail Safety Bill in front of us. There might be issues that are really bothering you as a member of the community that are not related to what we are here for. Once more, we humbly request that we don't bring them here because that is not what the purpose of this meeting is. So I am ready now to start and summarize the bill. We were also informed that we might be joined by the Executive Mayor and the Speaker. When they do come or any others were here, if they are councillors, we welcome you. But if the Executive Mayor and the Speaker come, we will acknowledge them at that point. That is how we are going to run today. So I'm ready to start. As I said, the bill that is before us is the Rail Safety Bill. The title itself does say that it's about rail and it's about safety on rail. This bill seeks to improve a regulatory framework around rail safety on our rails. The bill, once passed into an act or a law, will replace a current legislation called the National Rail Safety Regulator Act. One of the reasons the bill was introduced is that there were gaps or shortfalls in the current act that this bill seeks to rectify or correct such. I am now going to go clause by clause of this bill, but there are clauses that I will jump. I will pick those I think I want to draw your attention to. It does not by any means say the others I would have skipped you cannot talk to or they are not important. So I start on clause four. This clause makes provision that the Minister of Transport may approve certain exemptions on this act. And this also gives him the right or the time to suspend certain portions of this act or withdraw certain portions. Deals with the objects or the reason for existence of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause seven deals with the functions and powers of the Rail Safety Regulator. Clause nine and clause ten. Empowers the governance of this regulator through a board and clause ten deals with the composition of the board. Clause eleven up to clause fifteen. Clause eleven, who close fifteen? Talks about how to appoint a board, the criteria and how to disqualify members, people from being members of the board. From clause twenty to twenty-one. In fact, up to twenty-two. It talks about the appointment of a CEO of the Rail Safety Regulator, the functions thereof. Clause twenty-seven deals with the funding of the Rail Safety Regulator. It makes provision that the Rail Safety Regulator may raise funds on top of what they would receive from parliament. Another very important aspect that is introduced in this bill is the introduction of a rail safety permit. ... That is covered in clause thirty-five. If we go to clauses forty-two up to forty-six. Introduces another aspect of a railway safety inspector. It deals with who is a railway safety inspector, what can they do, what are their powers and so forth. There are instances where there are major accidents that happen on our railways. Clause fifty empowers the minister to determine which of these accidents can be investigated. In clauses fifty-four up to clause fifty-six. The bill introduces a mechanism under which any person who is not happy by decisions of the Rail Safety Regulator can appeal such decisions. Makes provision for the Minister of Transport to make regulations that will support this legislation. On my immediate right next to me, Honorable McDonald. The importance of regulations is that with regulations, when you find shortfalls in a principal act, you can quickly do regulations that support the act. The importance of regulations is that it gives the minister power to produce these regulations to support the implementation of the act. As I said, my intention was not to read the whole act for you, but to flag certain areas. Now, as I finish, clause seventy just determines the process once this act has been passed, how it will replace the existing one. And therefore, I will pause there. And this will be your opportunity now from here going forward. As I said before, we will take hands and ten at a time. You are more than welcome to express yourself in the language of your choice. And once more, I appeal that we limit ourselves to the Rail Safety Bill in front of us. And we try and limit ourselves to three minutes per speaker. So I'm ready to take hands. Alright, I see hands this side. Number four, CC. Number five. Number seven. Number eight. Maybe possibly in number yah, okay, base of six, yeah. Alright. Okay. Alright. 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 I greet you all. My name is Zandile Mkize. I am from the area of Kusawam Tetewa in Watnai. I am from the community of the area that resides near this railway line. And the other thing, the road that is near that railway line. The road that is nearby is never taken care of and it's totally damaged. They requested that in the beginning of the year or at the end of the year. They must take those matriculants around, train them, so that when they finish their schooling, they're able to take them on board. Thank you.
It is clear that I'm going to speak on the position of the EFF, as my dress says it all. We welcome the broad objectives of the bill, but the abolition of the railway police has led to serious problems in ensuring safety on South African railways. As a result, there has been a dramatic decline, not only in the safety of the passengers, but also in the ability of Prasa to safeguard critical rail infrastructure. We are pleading with you to return the railway police over and above the private security that is normally outsourced by the government. For more effective security and accountability, it will be wise to insource the private security. I thank you.
It is clear that I'm going to speak on the position of the EFF, as my dress says it all. We welcome the broad objectives of the bill, but the abolition of the railway police has led to serious problems in ensuring safety on South African railways. As a result, there has been a dramatic decline, not only in the safety of the passengers, but also in the ability of Prasa to safeguard critical rail infrastructure. We are pleading with you to return the railway police over and above the private security that is normally outsourced by the government. For more effective security and accountability, it will be wise to insource the private security. I thank you.
Nomani parlamenti liastoni painchi na sia ballali la okamba konu cha nji. One, ngo kwamu umbonu wamlo. Ngo kwamu kbona, iparlamenti lishoni. Njengoba kwa tia uhulumeni opete uloliwe. Usiza ngantin. One, singa kanani skati uhambu uloliwe lapayana. Munga kanani mizi ekra ekile ngololiwe. Xiu umsin do, umsin ndasina ndawo banav. Sasa ujwa yele. Two, ziyafi ngomo zabant korwa kmele si okokele iform. Iform lapana la isitata konalu hundred and fifty rand. Kunga aniskoketina kmele kubeybona abakoke latina. Nakona uskokele malenga yekuloliwe. Umkokele lakanjani malenga less than u ten thousand rand. I value yengomo, i more than u ten thousand rand. Laku kujekinsuta kastaoni piyenu uloliwe. Mina ngo kwami. Njengoba etu malema uzo vali uzago umxala twenty ba. March, no mi nginaye. Angi igilapo. Angi igilapo. Bo Baba naani, batonisho. Nonke myama umxope wendi ya wikalati. Ningasbuka lipanti. Ez macha sitali makaya. Ah kuta weka makale pechaya. Akona makapechaya. Yafita maka US, yafita England, yafita nomabi wupi akona. But bawa nagele makayabo. Nina ku ngani ngenzinga ndela ogu yona. Ngo ba nakutina, singa sitali parlamenti asina zutina. Skapa segile skasha zo uloliwe. Ah kanga ni, ufika laku uloliwe uensize tienbisu. Uituni laka itunianga. Ngali wako ukelile. Wakasha banawa abakile gula ini. Manja tinasiyenge tina. Yonke lentole yabantu bangape makaya kwamteetwa. Espechele mankayane, singa tubani, osabenza watranisene taweku. Nisbuka lakanjanti na. Ingasizi impata ngatolususho njali. Ngatolususho njali kodwa. Eh, ibugelentwa matoto. Ibugelentwa. Ibugelentwa tina nisbuka lapanti tina. Ngo ba naksimnyama tina. Ez ngesiaskuluma, but sifunuku se expressa ngelakweti yetu. Na ngitoli kukona. Mina ngiazlenyani zavni parlamenti. Angiazzi. Kodwa enwazi ikon, umpelenda bulapa ya. Uma simala pa, umxala twenty march, sizo besimla pa ya. Sizo besimla pa ya. Ngiti mina, ez njengoba kuluma namusha. Linga pelalelifigi ngabuyange mankayane. Njengoba kuluma namusha. Linga pelalelifigi leli. Leli. Lapana nafilene nzsize tienbisu lapaa. Nati nzo waki skole, i high school, nzo waki ground. Nakali umphakati, oh mka landlela. Nina nichachile misabenzina indigesa abanya bantu. Isipisbona kmele spheneficha sotwa. Oh, esu Afrika ngiti satisfuni kuleka ngon ninety-four. Siicholila kodwa askulagele tina ngangayenu. Nisela lapana nina, niaholi male ngaga. La makaya. Nsho nusnezi zindu. Zindu, oh ngasni go xinti nganzakwe.
Sia bon.
Yebon, yebon.
Let's, let's be quiet please. We need to get as many people to contribute.
Greetings to all. I'm Zamanilinda from ward nine. I really don't know whether the parliament does respect us. Parliament doesn't respect us at all. How does it help us? Because our houses are damaged, our livestock is dying, but we have to pay instead of being paid for these damages. The value of our cars is more than ten thousand rand. I'm also with Honorable Malema to shut down the country. Honorable members, regardless of any color that you are in, don't look down upon us. Why don't you take care of the people around the railway? There's a lot of promises from the railway people and you only employ people who are very far from us. Do you think we are fools because we are black? We are not fools. You just don't look down upon us. And on twenty march, we will be there. Things will be happening. Go to Mankanyana before the end of this week. You've given the jobs to the foreign nationals, but you don't take care of us. Thank you.
Ngiabingelela. Ngiabingelela. Eh, iparlamenti. Eh, ika malami ngusmangelemlojo, ngoma mosmangelemlojo. Sibongile kwa kulu ukbizwa iparlamenti sia bona kwa kulu tinasikulula ini. Sili nyaleluwa kwa kulu mina ngizo sho kuli iparlamentu kuti ngili nyaleluwa umyenua mi walinyazwa estime la nineteen twenty ten. September. Yeah. Twenty ten. Eh, ba kaleba ngtembisu uloliwa ngatuzo uzo mnuaba. Ah, azange gwenze loko. Guesa semakaze nje ba atuloliwa eh uzo menze lamalu nsele loku tenwajwe. Tesizo waktiwa asukubenge eh simnuabe bazosboni mwa loko agaze be pinde besenzeleluto kuze be manji. Nselle neyenge. Eh, isengane kwa kulu isafundi skole angazu kuti ngenzenjani. Obaba weyenge waye isebenzeli ngane waktola googleimala gula ini sakele eduzegala ini washona eh nimfuyo iyalimala iyafa askokeliki iloko nje. Njabele kwa kulu kuti kube inine nisbiza yo sia gbona loko. Eh, sinengenga kwa kulu, sinengenga kwa kulu. Ngo ba kuluma nje ngiallopeka neyenge. Ah, saazu kuti isenzenjani kodwa. Obaba weyenge waye isizi ngane zaake iloko nje benkushu.
Um, greetings and thank you for having called us here. My name is Smangalemlojo. Eh, I have a few problems with the railway system. In twenty ten, I lost my husband, the father of my kids. Um, and they first started by promising that they would help us bury him. Um, as time went on, they turned. They said we should continue bury him. They will help us afterwards. Up until today, nothing has happened. Um, I have young kids. I have to, I, I, I am suffering with young kids. When he was alive, he was supporting them. But now that he is gone, we, I, I am suffering with them. Eh, we have a, a, a number of problems near these railway lines. Eh, we lose our livestock, um, our livestock. We don't get paid for it, so those are the issues that I have. Thank you.
Sanbona. Ika malami ngopi nkiwaga meyiwa ngisuka indaweni asembonambi. Um, ngizo kulmela ballali basembonambi kota konu zo nglandi la ngimovazo be ganae. Eh, nkinga yezu saketu zenu cha nji. Uhulumenwa shtasa ngizi inlu esala guzo. Uyimangi ziyakreke ngapansi zikreka ukdula wekuz ziyah zikreke gile nje nenito nganapansi. Okay, oku nyie eskala ngaku sina bandwana abafundi kola, abafunda eskolini. Iskola abafunda guzo singendla waka cha nji. So kumele uktiba krose ucha nji ukuze befingelele eskolini. Even ngishosebe buyama lebe krose ucha nji ukuze befingelele eskolini. Ipreji enilikandile likute kwa kulu ukti abantwana be ngasuka lassala konu be ochige la ngali we, we, we komkuag. Wepreji lele nlikandile lingase klinikliku teka kulu. Oku nyie, si na njenga ballali basembonambi. Sitenga guzo ito uloleze ngenndla waka cha nji. We akpokutenga utenge ifitembu opu kumele uyeli se palini. Ofunumuntu zo ukulisa loko nganoksele palini ueli se ucha nji. Besakel ukti nizamukusiza ngali ngali ondawo nje kuti umanga besizo wazu kuti se etropeni. Si okocha okocha etolo sigwazu buya sikrose i ipri, i sikrose i ucha nji. Neyengomo ziyafa konala pa. Nomabe suga kuteka bantu be ngomogota, iyengomo ziyafa konala pa. Bestela loko, sia bon.
Um, greetings. My name is Pink Meyiwa. I'm from Guambonambi. Um, we have a problem with the railway system where we were built houses by the government near the railway system. Those houses are now cracking because of the movement of the trains. Um, also, we have kids who, that we live with near that railway line. When they have to go to school, they have to cross the railway line because the bridge that was built for them to cross is too far from where we actually stay. Um, we also use shops or a, 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 a shopping center that is also across the railway line. Sometimes you'd buy stuff and then when you need to come back home, you'd have to actually have people to help you lift whatever you have to get across the railway line. We are also losing a lot of livestock through the railway line, so we would ask for help in that regard. Thank you.
Omasonda. Eh, ngbingelele. Bonke abakona bihambe zetu zawari railways. Um, nabobonke ngikunza zagoo. Pagatu wonge otewa puma, obningwa bohaba la. Anguzo bamute koswale ngimfishan. Eh, speaker number one, obningu senkavile ngako. Kuikona be kuluma kosnami benzo begaga njalo. Parti ukuzelela. Oh, mina, ngatolis. Ika malami ngoto kwa wasu ward twenty-five. Emma Jana, nemankwanyane. Eh, I speak half of the member of the NSI. Yeah. Eh. Ucha nji osetuze wame ilose mka i, nema kuzulu. Eh, ukuzelela nje la kwe se kulo nyewe. Ngo ba kuningu se kulo nyewe funukmoseskati. Ngingali na mondu ngkuluma nje yakona. Sia tayala uba party bagari lue ukti lapo kukonu monakalokona bezamepe lukuti besinga pezele. Njengoba usislo esengminshila kuningi. Lo speaker number one, ukasha kwa bantu basetuze nocha nji yonke leonto. Besa guzo ba iloke engukumbula, it was eh ama eighteenth century. Lapaku, ema kuzulu. Walimala abantu bashona ababe hamba ngepas be shaiswa i guzu. Bashona inwaba ya labo bantu. Parti, I, I, I can't remember ukti kwenzaga lani mdeni niabo until now. So ezinto zonkelezo engazi ukti kualandelege kwa hamba wa kunnapi. Ngo ngali na mondu, ngingali nje parlamenti, ngabon.
Greetings to all the visitors, also protocol observed. My name is Dr. Zungu from ward twenty-five, Emma Jana. The previous speaker had said it all because we are from the same area. He, I just want to reiterate what has been said by her, but we request that we be paid for the damages conquered. We live in Makozulu and some people died in a bus that collided with a goods train. I don't know what happened, whether they were paid or not. There was nothing about the bill, Honorable Chapasen. Thank you.
Ngibingelele iparlamenti ngo kwe lalo zalo. Ika malami ngutobi le mteetwa nswakosaga mteetwa otandwenu ku ward nine. Ngizo kulumela i ward ninei otandwini sia bon. Sakiwe naskandayo, no ma naskoti sa ngaso asipelele. Loko nakina ngo kusnunu sela ngaso kodimfanele iparati zanga pellele. Besa ngibuya lagwe zimfu yo, imfu yo iyafa. Oh, ma siswa siswa tia ucha nji wa ugate ubiyeliwe. Ma ngakampa ma ngawa ninety-one loko ngakrepuke mtlabe agaze ngibone ubiyiwe. Oku ukti each generationi abata badala abaseko futabana imfu yo, imfu yo yeyetu. Okti ukti tina, siti uktu uloliwe ukuazu uzo kulumanati ukache tina. Lo ubiya kwa cha nji kuse amatu ubakit omsebenzi. Besa ngipinda ngibuya lala. Uloliwe angazoma uyango pululu inlento ukasha gwa wo kwe zinduna no chief. Tina gitisongo pululu be induna no chief. Utu uyeswa tia sebekashiu askuha ziloko. Oku ukti mina u, u, ucha nji osetuze nganga ukti ngishi TV uma sekudulisimela anyezwa. Sia tayala ukti baguetu ipelle nje lento ukti motu yakasha uloliwe kulumanendun. Aksisoka baka mteetwa, o tu yeso kashin nganiya kama mteetwa. Ay, yagenleonto, iron, ngabon.
Uh, greetings. My name is Toby Lemteetwa from Guamteetwa ward nine. Uh, we want to thank you for the building that you brought to us at Otandweni, but we could say you were trying just to bribe us with it. It is not complete up to now. Um, I have heard from elderly people that the railway line before was fenced. Uh, I, up until, as old as I am now, I have never seen it fenced. Uh, when these opportunities come, they would also mean job opportunities for us, the people who live closer to these railways. We should also say that the, 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 the railway or transit or whoever is in employing people should not go to the chiefs or isindunas when they are looking for people because some of us are not very close to those people. I live as close to the railway to an extent that when it passes, I cannot hear the TV inside the house. But when the job opportunities come, I do not get any of those. Uh, that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Ngibingelele iparlamenti, lonke nabakona. Ukuluma muniti soanchangasi Guambonambi eh ward two, Eslov. So lapana Eslovo gachi abliso kuto uloliwe ubuya kipelo mteetwa we pili sizo wazu kuti simbambi ngao. Eh, uloliwe sinsi lapana kipelo piliwa sifsi. Kunolile lapakbolile utuzegocha njiwaake uksuga gonke duze waseslovu uzo yo xonale ngaseskolini. Besa ukti two thousand eleven, uloliwe watuso kandelin kande skole iprinci elisuka lapana paga Eslovu elela ngapeche yeto lezi ya guamteetwa. Ez yapeche ya waka cha nji guamteetwa yeto. Besa zokanda iprinci elisuke lokshin eli ya ngapeche ya futu yeto. La oma princi wae ward ten biset twenty eleven. Agagaza ze abuya zoschela ngao. Which means isifsi lakuluma ngayo inkori, a, 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 agaykonyon, agaykonyon. Besa ukti number two, abantu ma be ukasha lapeluksin tinama klati sngawa hamba sugala pa ya inji nisia waloliwe mtlapa ma klatao ten. Umalishahi hut, uvugu tandu nga tand. Which utu sabenza kama cha nji ngishunga sabenziko. Oku esbi. Uma lipaga lapaa. Lesi ngola ngasuma konteswe ziipusha nganngimovu. Swe simsebenzi nje tina u ten, u twelve, u two, uze yo sixteen. Okay, nyaga wo, imi yaga yonk. Since nomku ba bejyo inilelekan. Kodwa a yikidestiza gala ngayo. Ez siglama mitala uka kipa, u, u, u ma klatao ten. Akonisha loti traki elingayola pa ya Guambonambi Eslovu. Elkipa bantu esu mteetwa wesekshin enaosa ina ninan, ansa oktini. Ukti lapo basetuza. Kwe opumi trakne trak. Nomakusakubega lomteto utuloliwe wangapagumpuma langa. No nalai kezet enisngasabenza watrasnet. Sngasabenza watspornet. Na kama cha nji igekonare. Which means ma kutsio wangapeso lekezet ena bantbakon is not allowed to ukasha kama cha nji. Leantosizo yivala ngensakend. Sia ingamola, sia bosha. Ngo ba velas nama lasabenz. Yebong.
Greetings. Greetings to everybody from parliament, protocol observed. I'm Mwiti Sinjanganase from Bonambi. We are happy about the bill that you passed, you yourselves. What I want to know is that, to, to say that the area is so filthy near the railway. And there, there is no bridge that was, no bridges that were, were promised that were going to be built. And when it comes to recruitment, the goods train, when it stops, it makes a very soundful hut and we just wake up wherever we are. But we are never recruited there. One day we'll shut down that railway line and you'll see wonders on that day. Thank you.
Sanbonani. Eh, nyabengelela, bingelela ba pati from parliament with protocol observed. Kamala muparamani, sibongo wa sokulu. Eh, nsoke Eslov, embonambi. Eh, nzo kulmelu umpagati, wa sembonambi, no mshabi sembonambi. Ezay local pastor. Eh, la shala konna, shala ngase, etu zane uchangi. Eh, futi iatromatizer indaba estimela, esluwa lapaa every day. Lapana snenga ne ngaani, mukala kalistimeli ngaani, kandisandu kumuma ngomiyangi, kumua ya balego. Besu ngazu kuti no ma mtlambi ipegaykona, nesstimeli na saz. Eh, number two, kuhlumile lapana, abe akendwa nje kunolile, nje gumtaga. Eh, umpaga twas Eslov, awesiza galuto nesstimela. Though iparamente no railway, no trustnet, ibonabaya keina, ngalel kuzelula. But umpaga to ktoli luto, ngalewa lokonje, izdoza, uku xamo shega. Eh, so, ine thoma kakulu indaba yo, ya lisstimela, ngoba, abatlali, abanasu insiza eh, eh, esuka yo, eh, paramente, aguna olo. Eh, ingane zyafunde kreshi, kreshla konali ngaani, I compare, i kreshla lapana Eslov, nela gamtetwa. Nela gamtetwa, ni tata plus minus two hundred seatas. Kotwa, ala Eslov, u fifty sita to thirty sita. Eh, eh, ingane, ukomunetangi, ingane parati, nguzo kuti, labantu bekanda lele, lele, le kreshi. Axoni kampane otoa ini, no ma, u, 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 uma spalo oye doa, ebekanda lele lap Eslov, neslamtetwa. So, ikona nje, Eslov, ukutunezelega kakulu, ukuti banganagua, abanba eseslovwa. Ezay pastor, eh, shala lapane khlaleni, eh, kunzima kakulu abantu, yebong kuti, epsuku, ba wela estime iloku uchangi, bayamsebenzin bayelu uchangi. Uchangi, akona, ngano, uba kutwa uchangi, uyabiwa, besa guenzwi bridge. I entrance, ibalegile kakulu, ne exit, ibalegile endaweni nakshala konna bantu. Laba puma konna, na lapaba dabange nakon. Kotwa, stesibonayo, la Eslov, abanariwena nje abantbakon, abazu, no kuti bangobanchi. Besakela kakulu iparamente eh, nabagari lue, eh, ba kati bangasiswa kakulu Eslov, bayo pegi entrance, eseslovwa, ukuti exit ya yo, ne entrance, ba puma group, bangena group. Ngoba, estimela sikesime three hours to four hours mile. Abantu mele bahlulila, abantu beke itola, abaguazu kusukulima simele, for three hours. Stola nisiza bagit. Sia akela.
Three to four hours. So, we are requesting that you look into that, please.
Nyabengelela iparamente. Ngobengelele bonga abakona ne ikunu, nabaho, nabaspete yo, eh, eh, endaweni, ngweluwa ngangwasu. Lokunuma yo, ututsile waga ndombe, na wasoku luka watu, anu, seshanga, nia ba kubaze gene. Owa kubazo yo, unoliwe. Ngiti amabonabonane kuwa, washo, ushaka. Kotwa, mnangiti amabonabonane, loliwe. Unoliwe, ona ninety-nine sixteen. Jesus. Samasengosi, washaisa, washaisa uloliwe ne, ne pasamase kulu. Wa famanda mani, abange ba be kulule, abange be petinga. Ife, na mngano mtoa itoel, ne kotak, ngan nga yelo ngosi. Anga kona ngamano, na no mtoan. Makona nje, ngentlala ngunu, kuuna, basinda, esinabona. Unoliwe, nosakwena, ingoza, asmasa, khamuka, asazilutu, antutu den, ikuma zegile. Kotak, ngan, ngan, ngan pati, no ma ngfuni eshe, ngutika ni man. Kimana nginga espelzele, wa chanchwa ilokuza, no mkuu ba utal, amafai na bantu. Kuabasinayo ngashala, one and a half, eh, eh, one and a four months espelzele, ngensela ngenyuwa, kokinye doati. Ngante lenkuluma ngay, angsinawo, ngante lena, ngangitala ngay, ilokuza, in, 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 in mane, yenkos. Na masasila na, wa ngali man, me ngando, upu, 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 da we kasi. Ngoba ngaxanga, no lusanga, antasemenzi, ife, ngisho, ngwasi, ito, utwa na inu. Ma jefele, ngos, 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 we nonto. Kuna bantu, abahanjala, makoskasa, ababaanjala, bazan, mapu, sekona na. Unoliwe, siyamuza, une, kulma ngesefti, epengeleni naye. Kotwa, po tumparati. Saati maskuluma, watiwa, ma be kulma singa kontina sese espelzele, watiwa, utuloliwe, nisuke linda ulaki. Sa, ma ignoa be, na, ma ignoa be, na abantu, abantu ba mama chanchwa, uloliwe. Ife, nami, no ma nganginya ke, kaba kwasupu, na lukanga ngimpense, ma fil, unoliwa, mas. Sia kolisa, no mtlambe na nginya kokoto, lezeskati, ekameno to, nisemenseli unoliwe. Aye lispegelale, nati sisi, inkumbena, true, unoliwe. Ma itoelena, presampa na. Mashonela, o ma, 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 o ma be nkan. Nkumbu na ba utwa ma be itoel, no yedo, epetinga, nitu, inkumbu, samazan, ma, wasoku, wa penela konna napu. Sia akela, tu, iparamente, genpegelale, no mparati. Sia bo nga, no ma nga uso, upamunoliwe. Mtlambe, esati, ne, ne, ne so utu. Ngansoba, mtlambe, kuso, kuso ma ngano, ne, ne, molele sisi, ntese, imolapemku, ana machaki, anse, ingoz. Sibula ya tunenja, atetu, emkwaguen. Mtlambe, ma nso ba nelse, yokumana, no mparati, mtlambe, snyanginpani, ingoz, emkwaguen, yebong.
Greetings, I'm Tulisile Ndombeela. I'm saying greetings to parliament. I'm from a disability group in the area. I am also disabled. In nineteen ninety-six, there was an accident that I was involved in. At that time, I was pregnant, but I survived. We've never been taken care of since then. I'm not getting any grant, even if I stayed in hospital for a year and four months. I was partially disabled. This worries me a lot. Sometimes I am unable even to speak, I just feel like crying. People died there. The parliament is talking about the safety of railway, not the safety about us. People were buried and they buried their relatives on their own. Nobody took care of those. Nobody took care of those people who were burying their relatives. So, take care of us, we are casualties, we are still surviving. Please, the parliament should take care of people. Make sure that you connect with the community so that you know all the problems that you are facing in the area. Thank you.
Kiabengelela iparamente, no mparati wonke, okono, omene, nglomshanga, no mkuu. We railway safety bill. Ikamala mungolden Ndombeela, osua wasoku lulu. Ke Wat Four, Pansweti Street, Kakinket, HI, ngomu nyage. Eh, washonela, ngoskazwa, ke ngosinke, eh, nza, ona ninety-nine sixteen. Lapakwazalako, ngoskazwa, eh, na bantaba eleven. Eh, uloliweke, wazam, ngosonde, lana, ngoshe, siizwe. Uti bazam, ngulanga, bezan, nganu konna, uzeskuwa, u, u, u ngua ba, lababa be konna, kotwa. Kuaba, inge, eh, nganu, kuaba, eh, uti sikuwa, sugu ngua ba. Eh, kuxutige, ezige, ezazengenza ganga. Indaba be canceling, uti, yoba sa thuma, ezeganjani, ngom, ngom, o, baba we ngan. Ngangenga zu five, eh, yaino five five, ino seven, eh, yaino nine, ino twelve. So, lezo ngani ngangwasu kuti ngi pati ngayetwa. Ulezo skati, ngoba, i, shoba zazenge. So, uloliwe, wa kunnala njalo, eh, ma ngiyao, kuwe, kuwe assess kuti ama safety signs, ay konna. Kotwa, kuti ama, ay, ay, selimele. Enga bonaga, nje, ba kpedo, kuwe be, kuwe wene, assessment kuti, ama safety signs wana nakon. So, ezige, enga ibuga, kuti zazenge. Eh, abanya ke, bali malaga kule moyeni, abanya baba zinkubela, nje ngalo ta te wetu sandobshu, kukshala pansi. Ungomu nyawa ba kubaze gene.